Oh, yea, oh, yea, oh, yea. Silence is commanded by this honorable commission. All those having business draw near.
Thank you, and you may be seated. You commanded now that we have here to the silence, so I'm ask everyone now to check your cellphones. Please, ma'am, please, sir, check your cellphones to make sure that they don't vibrate or cut them off completely. So they don't, they don't interrupt these proceedings as we go through today. This morning, we have Pastor Tommy Dukes from the, who is the senior pastor of the First Baptist Church of Garden City. He has served as a pastor for over twenty years in Georgia, Pennsylvania, and Florida. And he has helped establish churches in Pennsylvania and Florida. He had, he is trained and he coaches and he consult with over a thousand pastors and churches across the United States since twen- two thousand nine. He is passionate about sharing Jesus with people, equip them as disciples and cooperating God to make an eternal pass in their lives. We are so happy to have Pastor Dukes with us today. And Pastor Dukes comes to us and he and his wife Amber, and they have two teenage sons. So again, Pastor Dukes, welcome, and the mic is yours. And what I will ask you to do now is when you get through giving us your words of inspiration and it's time for prayer, all right? Then we're gonna ask the, um, the audience to stand with you as you pray. And then following the prayer, Commissioner Buford will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. The floor is yours, sir.
All right. Thank you. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to share with y'all today. I, uh, I've spent most of my life in some sort of a leadership role. And so I've kind of made studying leaders and leadership a passion of mine, and I know that's probably true of a lot of you. And so, uh, I felt led this morning to share some, some words of other leaders and then a few words of my own. But I will warn you, as a pastor, don't expect me to break any new ground. Like I tell the people in my church, you know, if I show up with some radical new ideas, it's definitely time to run me out of town, you know? My job is to share wise counsel of thousands of years ago. And so, uh, nothing new today, but I do want to share some things and some encouragement to you today. I want to challenge you specifically to lead with vision, stewardship, and a servant's heart. And so first of all, I want to challenge you to lead with vision. A classic old quote of an unknown origin says this, it says, "A society lead, a society grows great when its elders plant trees in whose shade they know they shall never sit." So those trees they're planting, they know they'll never have a chance to sit under the shade of those trees. That's a picture of vision. And so in your role, you're tasked with managing the urgent issues of today. In fact, I looked at the agenda, there's some issues there that have to be dealt with today, without neglecting the important issues that are gonna come fifteen or twenty years from now. So I want to encourage you to pray, to dream, to seek wise counsel, to make plans with vision, knowing full well that someone else will be holding the reins, and they may get the credit when all those dreams and plans come to fruition. That's what a good leader does. And don't forget what the Bible teaches us in Proverbs. Where there is no vision, the people perish. So lead with vision. Secondly, lead with stewardship. Andy Stanley says, "Leadership is a stewardship. It's temporary, and you're accountable." As you well know, as elected officials, the seats you hold haven't been yours forever, and they won't be yours forever. And I know you recognize the weight of leadership. You carry it around every day, right? The weight of leadership. And stewardship means you've been entrusted to manage that responsibility for a season. And ideally, leave it in better shape than you found it. Amen? You're accountable to your constituents, of course, but ultimately, you're accountable to the Almighty God. And that's what Romans twelve reminds us. It says, "If God has given you leadership ability, take that responsibility seriously." So we want to lead with vision, we want to lead with stewardship, and then finally, lead with a servant's heart. Max Dupree famously said, "The first responsibility of a leader is to define reality. The last is to say thank you, and in between, the leader is a servant." I gotta tell you, I love that quote, because it encompasses a lot of what I believe about leadership. You gotta face the facts. It's a lot of what y'all do, right? You face the facts, and sometimes they're not pretty. You gotta be grateful, and then you gotta serve others. I don't believe you'd be in these seats if you didn't believe in serving others. But I love this quote most of all because it echoes the words of my Savior. Jesus said this two thousand years ago about the heart of a leader as he was modeling it. Jesus said, "You know that the rulers of this world lord it over their people, and officials flaunt their authority over those under them, but among you it will be different. Whoever wants to be a leader among you must be your servant, and whoever wants to be first among you must become your slave. For even the son of man," talking about himself, "even the son of man came not to be served, but to serve others and to give his life as a ransom for many." Jesus modeled servant leadership, and that's what the people of Chatham County need. Leaders who serve their constituents. And so that's my encouragement, or my challenge to each of you as you do the important business that I see on this agenda. The important business of Chatham County. And I want to encourage you to remind yourself to lead with big-picture vision, with responsible stewardship, and a caring servant's heart today and every day that you serve. Thank you, and God bless you. If you'll stand, we'll pray. Let's pray. Thank you, God, for these commissioners, for their willingness to serve, for their heart for the people of this county. Your word tells us that all authorities are placed in their roles for their season by you. And so help them to lead with vision, with stewardship, and a servant's heart. In addition, Lord, give them integrity. I pray that they'll not act out of selfish ambition or vanity, but rather out of humility, like Jesus modeled for us. I pray that they'll look to the interests of the people they're called to serve, that they'll serve with integrity and fulfill the responsibilities of their office with godly character. Lord, give them strength and courage. Father, when they're feeling overwhelmed by the weight of that stewardship we talked about, may they find rest in you. Give them your strength. Lift up their hearts when they feel hopeless. You're the source of strength and the guide of comfort. Give them the courage to do the right thing, even when it's hard, even when it's not popular. And Lord, give them wisdom and guidance. Even in this meeting today, Lord, I pray for your wisdom. Give them careful thought to the decisions before them, that they'll know the best course of action. Give them clear discernment, so they'll be able to distinguish between right and wrong. And Father, please instruct these commissioners in the way that they should go, and give them ears to hear. And ultimately, I pray for your protection and blessing for the current and future residents of this great county through the faithful work of this board. And I pray that your favor would resonate for generations. Thank you again, Lord, for these leaders and for your hand upon them. Bless them and keep them. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner? Of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Is, uh, let me, um, say to you, Pastor, we, um, we can't pay you, but we want to give you a letter of our appreciation to show how much we thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to be with us here today, to bring us your words of inspiration. Thank you again, and we look forward to a great relationship. All right?
I would love to say, I got a text from a church member, and so those are the issues I talked about.
We know. Okay.
Thank y'all so much. God bless you.
Yeah, thank you. Roll call.
Chester A. Ellis, Chairman.
Present.
Bobby Lockett, District Three, Vice Chairman.
He's here.
Melinda Scott Hodge, District Two, Chairman pro tem.
Mark her present. She's on the way.
Yes, sir.
Work duty.
Anthony Wayne Noah, District One.
Here.
Patrick K. Farrell, District Four.
Here.
Tanya Milton, District Five.
Present.
Aaron Whitley, District Six.
Here.
Dean Kickleyder, District Seven.
Here.
Marcia Buford, District Eight.
Here.
All right, now at this time, let it call on Commissioner Milton, who will, um, lead us in our youth commissioners.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we have two lovely ladies here today who are, who have great futures ahead of them. Uh, the first one we'll talk about is Shreela. She's Shreela Patel. She is in early college and studying, well, her career will be marine biology. And you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Um, for marine biology, um, I would love to study at Savannah State because they do have one of the best marine biology programs in the country.
Very good, very good. And we want to welcome back Kushie. Kushie is a senior at Savannah Christian. And when she was here before, I asked her to explain her career, which is criminal psychology. You want to give us a little bit of background on that?
Sure. It's basically when, um, you're using psychology to-
Is your mic on?
Yes. Yeah, sorry. It's basically trying to use psychology to help understand criminals and their behaviors to target their next moves and make them unsuccessful in their planning.
Very good, very good. We want to welcome you both here, and I want you to listen in, ask questions, participate. Anything you want to ask, any questions you want to ask. What they say, the only question that's a dumb question is one that doesn't get asked, so ask the questions. Thank you.
Welcome both of you to our meeting, and we hope that you will take, uh, part in what, in the discussion that's going on. And, um, if you want to ask a question or you want to make a statement, just raise your hand. And if I miss it, one of the commissioners will get it and call it to my attention, okay? So that we can make sure that you take a part.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. At this time, it is, uh, we have the responsibility of having our second public hearing on House Bill, uh, five eighty-one. Last night, we had the first of the two, uh, and, um, it says on here, uh, the second public hearing on Chatham County's intent to opt out of House Bill five eighty-one. Um, I don't know that that's gonna be true, all right, that we are going to opt out. And so what I'm gonna ask the commission to do now, to give me a motion and a second that we can open a public hearing.
So move.
Second. Probably motion and second that we open the public hearing on House Bill five eighty-one. Is there any readiness? Please cast your votes. I'm coming. I'm looking for, I'm looking for seven. All right, okay. All right, all's in now. Um, let me call on, um, Commissioner Kickleyder for opening a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, for the people in the audience, because I don't believe we plan to go through the entire presentation that we went through last night from the Board of Assessors, but I just want to say that for the people at home watching, the state of Georgia, they are still, they're in the process of changing House Bill five eighty-one. So we, we being all local governments throughout the state of Georgia, we still don't know the exact impact, what the financials figures would be, of impact on the budgets. Um, by law, we had to hold these public hearings saying that we were opting out just in case that's what we're forced to do for some reason. But like the chairman said, we have not made up our mind. We did learn last night through a great presentation by the Board of Assessors, and they're here to answer any questions. We did learn last night that if, if both homestead exemptions go into effect, that House Bill five eighty-one will coexist with the Stevens Day homestead exemption. The BOA will then have software, and I believe they're already in the process of getting it together, and their software will determine each year which homestead exemption would actually save the homeowner the most money. And then that would be the one they would apply for the homeowner. So right now, that's where we stand. We really don't know any more than that because, again, the state passed something, and they must have realized they maybe bit off a little more they can, could actually chew at the moment, so they've pulled it back in, and they're discussing it and messing with it. And we really have no idea what we're gonna get back when they're finished. But, um, just, I can't say how everyone will vote up here, but as of last night, it appeared very much like, from what we know at this point, to me, it appeared as if we would, should have no problem with this body approving, allowing both of them to coexist together. I say that, but don't get excited about your other governments. If you live in a city of Savannah, they have a built-in CPI with their Stevens Day. The county, we do not have a built-in CPI. Other words, we're not increasing that value of your home every year by percentage. And they do, the city does, and the Board of Education does. And we have no control over them. What we decide to do eventually will affect your, when you get your tax bill, your county taxes only. And the people that live in the unincorporated areas of Chatham County, which means not in one of our cities in Chatham County, it would affect your portion, your special service district portion of your taxes. But again, as of right now, it appears as if we would be able to adopt both and save you one way or the other. So having said that, I was just hoping to help cut down where if anybody's angry about anything, pack that anger aside, because at this point, we really don't have the numbers to, to know what's gonna actually happen. But right now, it looks like we're gonna be able to do what's best for you either way. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that, Commissioner Kickleyder. I just want to make it clear that, um, House Bill five eighty-one means that everyone is automatically opted in. All right, so the only action that this board would have to take, if we so choose, would be to opt out. If we choose to take no option, excuse me, no action, then we're already in. I want people to be clear of that. If you don't see us taking a vote to quote-unquote opt in, it's not because we're not making sure that you have both options available. It is because, as it states now, understanding that there are changes at the legislature being made as we speak, um, as it states now, everybody, every government entity is opted in automatically. The only action that would be necessary would be to opt out. So just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
All right, got you all. All right, um, you, Commissioner? Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Hey, I just had a question. What is the House Bill five eighty-one in simpler terms?
All right, here's what, here's what I want to do. Why should I? See, you asked a question that we were gonna get to, okay? Uh, and Commissioner Kickleyder alludes to it, but let me do this first now. There is a pad, all right, just your last chance now. There is a pad. If you want to speak while we're talking about House Bill eight, five eighty-one, you must come and sign on that pad now, all right? Please, ma'am, if you're sitting here and you want to speak or you want to ask a question, please come and sign up on that pad right now, all right? All right, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be just like going once, going twice. So, all right, now, here's what, here's what I want to do. Um, we have the, um, Board of Assessors here. Come on up, y'all, and give us, um, give- Come on up, y'all, and give us, um, give us the-
A better explanation than I would have given.
Yeah, just go ahead and go ahead. And since I saw you all coming, alright, I knew last night you all gave us the presentation we showed up on, um, on the screen. But just, just go where you need to go to give us an explanation, and then we'll go from there.
It's going to be a five-minute presentation.
You answer, you answer her question.
Yeah, just answer her question.
Understand what her question is.
Cory is the chief advisor.
Alright, Cory. Her question is, she wants to know what five eighty-one is, right? That's what she wants to know. Alright, so tell her what five eighty-one is.
Well, probably the better explanation is to narrow it down to part of five eighty-one for this conversation, which is a homestead exemption. Five eighty-one actually has a significant amount of changes. Uh, they're far more reaching than homestead, but for this conversation, it is a savings off of the assessed or taxable value of a property that's calculated per property each year, depending on that property's value.
Did you get that?
No.
We can also launch this, my three-hour presentation is still loaded here.
It, it applies to your home only, not to business and commercial property, but people's homes only. They, they, we, governments tax on a reduced value of what it, the homes actually valued at, and this actually reduces that value right off the bat compared to what exists currently.
Can I hear it?
The Chatham already has one of the best taxing systems because we adopted something called the Stevens Day, and it went into effect in two thousand and one. And here's why we don't know what's going to actually be best. People, if you bought a house in two thousand and fro- the value would have frozen at that point, at the reduced value that's in place. It would have frozen, and that's the value you would still being ta- would be taxed on today. So, in this county, it could really harm a lot of our citizens if House Bill five eighty-one trumped the Stevens Day. The Stevens Day can be much better than five eighty-one for many, 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 many people. But new home buyers may benefit a little bit more from House Bill five eighty-one because it starts them out a little lower on what they're taxing the value at, so.
And for you, it's just this, your parents will have a little bit more money to spend on you, okay?
Go ahead, Cory.
That's pretty much it. So it's a, it's something that grows and changes for as long as you have the exemption. So it's one of those things where you have to qualify for homestead, which means you have to occupy the residential property that you own. So come in and apply, and a initial value gets established. And as that value changes throughout the years, if your property value increases, the savings would increase because it's a comparison difference between when you got that exemption initially versus what the value of the property is now. So property values go up, the savings would go up. Property values go down, the savings would go down. So it floats with the value of the property in relationship to when that exemption first was established for you at that property.
Okay, did we get to your question? Alright, good. Um, and here's what, here's what the audience and all those listening in, you heard, um, Commissioner Kicklider allude to it. As we speak right now, there is a, a webinar going on with ACCG, which is the, uh, association that all the counties are connected to, right? They're trying to explain what's going on between now and Tuesday. Attached to House Bill, uh, five eighty-one last Wednesday, they came up with House Bill ninety-two, alright? House Bill ninety-two deals with the timing of House Bill five eighty-one. So, it's come out of committee this coming Tuesday. Uh, it will go before the full, um, uh, um, House, alright, and they will vote on the timing. Let me tell you how, how we got caught, and, um, then we almost got knocked out, but we still alive. Uh, when we first got the information, we needed to have these public hearings and opt in or out by March first of this year, alright? Last Wednesday, they moved the date from March first until May first. Then they discovered that they had to, they just couldn't say, okay, we're going to extend the date, so they had to write a house bill. That's why ninety-two came into effect, alright? So, as they did to move it from March first to May first, then they decided, um, from last Wednesday up until yesterday, that they were going to make it March thirty-first. And then the clearance came that we're talking about March thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine, okay? So you see where the confusion is. So then we were asked by the legis- our legislative delegation to don't do anything. And we started to call off the first public hearing last night, but then we discovered that five eighty-one is the law, alright? And they have not gone in to change the law, so we had to still have these public hearings. That's why we're having the second public hearing. Now, Tuesday, once the timing mechanism change, all that I'm saying to you may change again because if they move the timing until May twenty twenty-nine, alright, then that's going to give us a, a longer time to do. But based upon what stands now is that the Stevens Day, which we all have here in Chatham County, alright, homeowners have, and five eighty-one will coexist, and the Board of Assessors will put in the software so that when the legislators get through and they have to assess your property value, it will give you the best of, of the two. You won't get both of them. You get the best of the two. Either the Stevens Day going to be best for you, or five eighty-one's going to be best for you. But in the meantime, and in between time, there is written legislation going on now to change verbiage in five eighty-one, alright? We don't know what that is yet. So after Tuesday come, and they go back in the session, we've been coming back to you with more changes, and the Board of Assessors don't know yet. That's why we cannot give you any numbers, okay? Because the number is going to change, but we can say it's going to deal with property value. But it's your residential value, alright, not your commercial value, not your, because I, you own, uh, lot, because, um, Stevens Day dealt with, um, five acres or less.
Five acres and less.
Five acres or less. House Bill five eighty-one deals with five acres or more.
Correct, in that there's no provision, but that also may change.
Alright. Now, any, any question from any commissioner? Any question from any commissioner? I hope we've done the best we could to explain this, but I want to say again now, before I close this public hearing, this is a moving target that will move again Tuesday, okay? And so, what we're doing is, we're making sure that we stay on top of what the legislators are doing, okay? And they're getting us information just as we get it, you will get it, alright? And so now, but it, we required by law, because five eighty-one is a law, we're required to have these hearings, uh, and be somewhat of a decision-maker between now and March first. But that will change when they have their, their, um, hearing on Tuesday, which will extend the time. We don't know when that time will be, but we've covered, um, public hearing one, and we've covered public hearing two, alright? I don't know that when, and I won't tell you a date, no, well, I guesstimate on a date when public hearing three will be in, and we will make a decision here, alright? But we're looking at what is best for the taxpayers of Chatham County. Now, again, the last thing I want to say now, and, um, any commissioner can chime in, is that we don't have control over your municipality, and whether you live in Bloomingdale, Pula, Port Wentworth, Garden City, City of Savannah, Thunderbolt, Tybee, or Vernonburg, we don't have any control over that, okay? We don't have any control on what the school board does about five eighty-one. We can only do what the commission is commissioned to do about five eighty-one. So, if you want to find out what your municipality want to do, or if you want to find out what the school board is going to do, you have to go ask them. You can't ask us because we don't know, alright? We have to ask them just like you do, alright? With that, now anybody else got, alright, let me have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Probably motion and second that we close the public hearing. Ready for the question? Please cast your votes. No wait, no six?
Oh, my bad.
Alright. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I kept my promise, too. Got you in and out of here.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Alright. Proclamation and special presentations, we don't have any. We don't have any chairman's item, no commissioner items. Uh, the item, item number nine, which is the, um, item that's on the table, uh, we, it's going to remain on the table because we're still searching for some information that need to be made before we can make a decision about that, alright? I don't need to do, just let it stay, right? Okay, keep me right. I'm going to items for individual actions. Vote on the following board appointments. Appoint George Woods to the Coastal Regional Commission. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Se- second.
Probably motion is second that George Woods be appointed to the Coastal Region Commission. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Alright. Appoint Stanley Mosley to the Chatham County Recreation Authority. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's probably motion is second. Are you unreadiness? Please cast your votes. Alright. To request budget approval of the following budget amendments and transfer, one, in the general fund, transfer forty thousand, forty-four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars from contingency to increase the voter registration operational budget. Two, in the multi-grant fund, increase revenues and expenditures, two hundred and ninety, three thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars for criminal justice coordinating council, um, by grant, alright? Three, in the S.L., uh, the LDA-O fund, appropriate fund balance, sixty thousand dollars to increase the LDA-O operational budget. Four, in the sales tax three fund, transfer one million, one hundred thousand dollars from Quacko Road to I sixteen slash Little Neck Road, Jimmy Deloche interchange project. Is there a motion? Second. Probably motion is second that the request be approved. Are you ready for the question?
Can I ask one question?
Alright, question.
Um, item, one point one million from Quacko Road to I sixteen Little Neck?
Right.
Do we not need the one point one million for Quacko?
This is strictly a cash flow, um, item.
We'll just transfer it back.
We just transfer it back. We're getting reimbursed through, uh, state funds. Uh, so when, when the state reimburses us, we'll put the money back.
G-Dot, G-Dot is paying for it, but we had to pay upfront, and then they, they reimburse us. That's what this is.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it didn't disappear forever, so.
Yeah, money going. Alright, any other unreadiness? Please cast your votes. Excuse me. Alright, thank you. Transmittal of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, second quarter financial report, Mr. Manager?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, board. I'm going to ask Ms. Davis, our finance director, to come to the podium. She has a, a brief presentation on our second quarter financial report, and, uh, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. So, Ms. Davis?
Good morning, Chairman, uh, Commissioners. Um, this is our second quarter that ended on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And, let's see, yeah. Uh, general fund revenues were one sixty-three point one million with expenditures of one thirty-one point oh million for a net income of thirty-two point one million. And the special service district had thirty-four point four million revenue and twenty-four point eight million in expenditures for a net of nine point six million. Um, just as a comparison, last year at this time, we netted somewhere around, um, forty-eight million in the general fund. So we're a little bit behind from where we were last year, uh, primarily due to higher expenditures. And sales tax, seven collections, for the quarter, we collected thirty point four million, and we, uh, have collected four hundred and sixty-seven point four million since inception. In the lost fund, we collected, uh, seven point nine million in the second quarter, and a year-to-date thirteen point two. In other news, uh, confiscated assets, we have collected already five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for this year. Uh, capital assets purchased in the capital improvement fund have, it has been six point five million. And the FIRE fund is within budget at nine point three million, which includes one point six million in capital purchases. And all other funds are significantly below budget. In our cash and investments, we have a total cash and investment balance as of December thirty-first of six hundred and seventy-five point nine million. And as you can see, uh, it, how it's distributed there. And that's pretty much it.
Alright, any questions for the financial report? Alright, Commissioner.
Ms. Davis, you stated that there was an increase in expenditures in the general fund, um, causing the difference between the forty-eight million and thirty-two million. At a high level, what type of expenditures, expenditures did-
To a large degree, it's salaries. We've had significant pay increases due to, you know, the high inflation. We've quite had cost of living increases last, I think, July, uh, which were across-the-board increases as well as increases with our public safety personnel. So, uh, a big portion of that is the salaries.
Thank you.
And the good part about that is we planned for it, so that we didn't have to go outside of the budget. Any other, any other question? Let me ask a question, and I know, and I'm honestly, I'm not trying to be facetious, but I've been trying to close this out ever since we moved that, um, three point five million out of there and put it. What can we do to, in Splosh One, going back into the eighties? It's got ninety cents left.
That's point nine million dollars. Uh, we, we've got projects on the books, and we'll, we will be wrapping that up, uh, uh, sometime soon, so we'll get you a, a report on when we can, uh, close, completely close out Splosh One.
Yeah, and, and, and that's what we're working on, we're working on closing, because those are projects that were around here from the eighties and the early nineties.
And actually, this is in millions, so it's not ninety cents.
That's a million, that's nine million?
That's nine hundred thousand.
Point nine million.
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand? So... What project we can put that nine hundred thousand?
We, we, we've got a plan in place, Mr. Chairman, and we'll get that to you. Uh, we're working with engineering, yes, sir.
Please, um, and, 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 and my reasoning for saying that is because these things be hanging around, and they just be sitting there.
Well, but I will, will-
Then we gonna might, well, then we gonna wind up getting some earned income.
Well, that's, that's what most of that is.
Then we get the earned income, then we gonna have to find something else to do with the earned income. Because all it's going to do is sit there, and it's, it's like, it's like the little, um, what's the little animal name that run around and the thing?
I, I believe the, the rules state that, uh, we can transfer those funds for general fund.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, uh, general obligation debt. So we could possibly, if we just have a little few dollars in there, we could do that.
I was making fun of the, I was making fun of the ninety cents now. Y'all, you knew that already. But anyway, um, any, any other questions now? Alright, thank you, ma'am. And we thank you all for the, tell, tell, um, tell my team upstairs, um, I'm looking for, whose birthday coming up?
Well, we are having a Valentine's brunch this next Wednesday, and you are more than welcome to join us.
Y'all get one chance to get an invitation, alright? And, and this your chance. She told you they're going to have a Valentine's brunch. You got one chance to get there. Because if you don't meet me, I mean, if you don't beat me there, I'm going to tell you what's going to happen when you get there. Because I'm going up there. I'm coming. Thank you, ma'am. Alright, let's go to the action calendar. May I have a motion to accept the action calendar's entirety?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the action calendar in its entirety with one amendment to item B.
Okay.
Uh, to reflect that it says Al Bungard Conservation Area as opposed to Al Henderson Conservation Area.
Okay, that's typing, girl, that needs to change, alright?
Second.
Alright, then probably motion is second, that we accept it with the one, um, clerical error that we made. All, uh, you ready for the question? Alright? Commissioner Kicklider?
On the same subject, basically, as earlier, but I think it's a pretty big deal for West Chatham, what's going on with item seven, eight. So somebody from staff could just brief them on this. This is part of a- So somebody from staff could just brief them on this. This is part of a lot of work that we, we're all getting done out there to help address these major traffic issues.
Is um, is the engineer, uh, is?
I'll get Ms. Cooley to come, she'll come in and explain.
Is Ms. Cooley here? Can, how, how soon can she get out? Is she back up on the fourth floor? All right, send, send the word to her to come. And what we'll do is, um, I'll come back and let her, um, let her explain and talk about it, okay? All right. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just also would like the record to reflect on item number four, uh, the I G A with CETA, um, on the Vision Twenty Thirty-three Strategic Initiative. Um, that I made a recommendation that for the appointments, instead of the N double A C P being um, one of the appointees, it'd be the Greater Savannah Black Chamber of Commerce. And then there is a vacant appointment, and I, uh, my recommendation is that the uh, Savannah, excuse me, the Chatham Savannah Area Latino Chamber of Commerce be that appointment, based on the other appointments that are reflected, which include the president of the uh, other chambers. And basically, it's a bunch of business organizations. And so, N double A C P, with all due respect, is more of a social organization uh, rather than a business organization. So just to be in line, um, making sure that we have all of our communities represented in this. So I just wanted the record to reflect that, please.
All right, and as we said in the back now, that goes to that executive board. Those recommendations go to executive board, and we'll take care of that in that executive session, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So that's in the record. Um, all right, now, is there anything else? All unreadiness covered? Please cast your votes. All right, let us move on. Don't worry, we, I, I still got it with Ms. Cooley to come in. Uh, I haven't forgotten. All right, we don't have any first readers, we don't have any second readers. And so now we go to information, Mr. Manager.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna ask, uh, our, um, grant staff, uh, led by, uh, our, our team to come forward to, uh, give an explanation as to the, the check that we got from D C A when we were in, um, in Atlanta. So I'm asking Ms. Jennings to come to the, to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I have some friends with me today. I have Coastal Habitat here, come on up, Dwayne. And we've also got, uh, Port Wentworth representatives. Um, so when we were in Atlanta last week for Savannah Chatham Day, it just so happened that we also, um, were invited to participate in a big check giveaway. Um, this check represents a check from D C A One Georgia for the housing development project, which will be to, um, hopefully, this part will pay for the infrastructure to build a street, and then Habitat will be able to go vertical with eighty-three units. So I just wanted to make the presentation, Chairman was there. Um, and then at the same time, just for, um, your information, the City of Savannah also received two point five million for another project. So Chatham County got right at five million total, um, in that process. So, um, I'll let the stakeholders speak if they want to, but that's what we're here to talk about today.
All right. Anybody wants to speak?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, Steve Davis, City Manager in Port Wentworth. We are so excited to do this partnership and, uh, it's a, it's really, it's a multifaceted uh, project where you've got the county, you've got the city, you've got Habitat, and now you have the state as well. So it is a multi-jurisdictional project. It's a, a fantastic project. It's the first new development in the historic downtown Port Wentworth in over fifty years. So this is a, this is really a historic, uh, development. We're excited. I think that, uh, Ms. Jennings has done a fantastic job, um, pulling all these pieces together, and we appreciate her, we appreciate all of you. Um, and we're excited for this joint project to move forward and, and get the, I think you're putting out the survey, or the survey is out for the naming of it as well, so we're really excited about getting that name and getting it out there and getting the, the dirt moving on this project. So thank you very much for having us. I do have, um, some, uh, of our council members here. I've got the mayor pro tem, Gabrielle Nelson.
Good morning.
I got council member Rufus Bright.
Good morning.
Morning.
Council member Sean Randerwaller. And, uh, my deputy city manager, David Stahl, is here with us, so. But, uh, thank you so much for having us, and, uh, actually, we enjoyed the five eighty-one presentation before, cause I didn't see last night, so a little bit of a surprise, so we got some, some education today too, so thank you.
Okay. Now, um, Mr. Manager? Say, girl, come on.
Sir?
No, no, is somebody else wanna speak?
Yeah.
Come on, come on.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, uh, on behalf of Habitat, Coastal Empire Habitat, here, ma'am, I'm the V P of our Board of Directors. I'm extremely thankful and happy that you all, leadership allowed for partnership beyond our immediate community that extends in, involving other municipalities. Um, we're extremely excited about this project. We can't wait to get it going. And we hope that this gets to be a shining example of, excuse me, the productivity that we can accomplish when we all work together for our greater community. Um, and we're looking forward to putting some homes in place for homeownership and creating some opportunities for our constituents.
Thank you. No one challenge. All right, anybody else wants to speak? I do a favor. Turn around and face the clock. Put the check in the middle. Yeah, we should have brought both of those checks. Cause we, we had the other check, um, I had to accept the other check. Oh, you want me to come down there?
Yes, sir.
All right, I had to accept the other check for the City of Savannah.
But all that money came to check. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all.
All right, now, Katie. And now, so that, so that you all will know, so that those who don't know, will know where we're going, this is the first in a series of, um, partnerships that we are working with the, um, not only the municipalities, all right? We're talking to Bloomingdale, Port Wentworth, we're doing it with Port Wentworth, Pooler, Garden City, City of Savannah. We also have a partnership going with the army, because they too have a crunch in providing homes or houses for our military stationed at Hunter. All right, so we have, we are partnering with the, with the federal estate and all our local governments to put in housing. And then there is another, uh, initiative that's going on, that you need to know that we're working on. Uh, and you hear it in the news as workforce housing, okay? But I work from the standpoint of is obtainable housing, because when I went to, or I went to attend five different meetings, and when they talked about affordable housing and workforce housing, they started at sixty thousand dollars. And I know for teachers in Chatham County and for firefighters and for police, they don't start their salaries at sixty thousand dollars, so you were counting them out. Right, so that's why we, it put forth this initiative. And, uh, we thank the state, the governor, and, um, Commissioner Nun, who's at D C A, and those for partnering with Chatham County, um, Commissioners, to put these grants and put this money in place, so that we can, um, help to build the housing we need here, because we are in a housing crunch. That's whether you're talking about apartments or whether you're talking about single-family homes, we are in a crunch, okay? Now, Mr. Manager, um, I see Ms. Cooley, then those are here, let them come. All right, now, go back to, um, we're going back to.
Seven A.
Seven A. All right, you got in front of you?
Yes.
I just wanted to, um, brag on staff, let the public know this is a major, um, thing, beginning, kind of overall, what's going on in that general area and what this is, is what I'd like for the minute.
Well, thank you. And speaking of bragging on staff, I brought our project manager, Nathaniel Panther, who's also Assistant County Engineer, who's fabulous. And I'll let him explain and answer your questions on anything.
Okay.
Good morning, Ill.
Good morning.
So this is the, uh, interchange project where Little Neck Road and Jimmy Deluge Parkway tie in. Uh, we're in the preliminary engineering phase now. Um, the proposal is gonna be a diverging diamond interchange. That's the same type of interchange we have at State Route three oh seven and sixteen. Um, with your approval today, we'll keep this project on track and authorize right away by the end of this fiscal year. Staff has worked hard um, to get, uh, federal funds for both preliminary engineering and right away, I think in excess of six million dollars right now. So it's really important we keep the project on schedule, so we don't lose that money. Um, in addition to that, and I know it's been, been asked out there, uh, we ha, we are working on a temporary traffic signal for the intersection of John Carter Road and D O T Barn Road at Little Neck. Those bids open February twenty-fifth, so we're moving forward with that as an interim improvement while we come back and do this bigger project for that area.
Wonderful. Wonderful. I just wanted everybody to know, cause that'll definitely help out right in that area.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, Commissioner Milton has a question for you.
Thank you, sir. Um, hello. Um, I've, I've had a couple of calls on the, the metal plates that are now on Little Neck Road. Talking about, it's like about twenty-six of them, and they're not flush with the road. Is there anything that's gonna happen to actually fix what's below there? Or are they gonna still have to drive on those metal plates?
So I don't want, uh, I was out there the other day, cause we're working on a project on Stell Park. I, I think they're on Bush Road, not Little Neck. I haven't seen them on Little Neck Road.
That's, that's because they were put there by, um, Bloomingdale and who else is on that Little Neck Road? Um, City of Savannah?
I think.
Georgia Power is on there.
I'm, I'm saying that Georgia Power's got a big project on Bush Road.
Yeah.
And they've done some work out there, and with the heavy trucks, they put steel plates out there. But to answer your question, whether it's Bush Road or Little, Little Neck Road, yes. They should be able to put some temporary asphalt down, and they need those signs that say bump. I mean, it's not gonna be perfect, but you can transition it so it's smoother than what's out there now. So we can work with them on that to see if we can, we can get them to do that. But I drove it, I think I was out there Tuesday, and it, you know, you don't, you hit it at normal speed, it, it's a bump.
Yeah. Plus, Ms. Ms. Cooley, you might can, you might can explain it in, in better terms than I can, cause you speak engineering language and I speak common language, okay? But Little Neck Road, the foundation's no good, right? Go ahead and explain it. Or you, if he can do it, it's fine, it's fine. But just explain how, what we mean by the foundation is no good.
Little Neck Road is substandard to the, to the, to today's standards.
Right.
What, you know, it was built and paved way back when that was all farmland out there.
Truck and trailer and a pickup truck.
Yes, and now you have a landfill that daily, heavy loads are out there. So that's part of the, with the project, we're working on Little Neck Road. We're gonna build a standard road that's gonna be able to handle the trucks that are out there now, all the additional vehicles that are gonna be out there now. But it's a probably, but, just to give you in simple terms, it's probably about half the thickness it needs to be, when you look at the rock asphalt base. So we're gonna build it up to a better standard.
In addition, you've had, you're having to coordinate with the City of Savannah and the City of Bloomingdale to make all this come to fruition.
Oh, that happened, yeah.
And, and Feds.
Because we only have
Right.
a certain amount of the road and the lay on the others, so.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
So we do have a plan to actually move it towards four lanes too, correct?
Right, right now, what we're working, y'all approved at the last meeting, we're gonna go back and redesign to a full four lanes from seventeen to ninety-five. And the City of Savannah has agreed to pay for half of that.
That's.
Now, what we haven't, we know at some point, the bridge will need widened, and the other side of Little Neck Road will, will need to be widened. We're not working on those plans right now. We don't have money to do that right now. So that's probably gonna be a bigger Splosh.
And the Feds have to do the bridge, right?
And if you get federal money, I mean, I, I know there's a lot of things in the works.
All right. When you say the Feds gonna do that, let's don't say that, all right? Because we're going through the state. G dot has, G dot has agreed to, to work with us on the widening of the bridge.
Okay.
Uh, and they're going to the feds for us, and on their behalf. And so, as we start to widen, uh, Quacko Road, Little Neck Road, John Carter Road, which gonna take in Bush Road and some of the rest, all right? Federal, state, and, um, the county, and the local municipalities, all will come in together to do it together, all right? So that when we start to widen the road, if we widen the road and don't widen the bridge, all we doing is creating a bottleneck. So all that has to happen in the same time, and so we have to synchronize all those activities going together. So, um, it's good to know that, and for the general public to know that we have obtained funds from the feds and from the state, and we're doing that, but, uh, we're acting as the conduit for G dot, all right? But what, the reason why I wanted you to explain to them about, uh, she's talking about the putting, the, putting the, the metal grade there to get over, cause when they dig the hole, they just cover the hole with, is because the underlining isn't any good. And so therefore, uh, that's gonna be a while, all right? And all they can do is put up the bumper sign and say, cause even if they put a temporary pavement in there, it's gonna sink, because what's under is not gonna hold up anything. All right, it's gonna, it's gonna go away. So, uh, we know those potholes are there, but we do want them to know that there is a plan, and, and they have to go through the stages of design. And, and so, it's not gonna be fixed next month. It's not gonna be fixed by the end of the year, all right? Uh, we talking about, let's, let's guesstimate now, and that might be a bad thing for me to say, but let's guesstimate. We talking about completion time three years from now?
For which projects?
For Little Neck Road.
For Little Neck Road between seventeen
Right.
and ninety-five, that we're almost, we'll be under construction by the end of the year is our goal.
Under construction, but we won't be through?
No, that's about, that's probably an eighteen to twenty-four minute project. And then you gotta talk about designing the other side, depending on the pots of money that's coming from, depends on the length, but and then throwing right away acquisition, and so you're probably looking at four or five years minimum to get to construction on the other side.
Right now, our, Bloomingdale has plans to actually repave their section of Little Neck County, all the way till their city limits.
Correct, and we partnered with them, I think at the last meeting, to do our portion to the City of Savannah limits.
Right.
And then from there, it goes city, and then it cut, does come back to the county for a little, it's
Right.
blighted. But we are
Hodge, hodge.
From sixteen down to our li, first section of limits is gonna be repaved. I think they're gonna start in March, it's, the temperatures have been.
Can, can we, can you coordinate with Savannah and let them?
They are coordinating.
Make them, okay, I'm talking about this, that piece.
Yeah.
Are they well aware where, hopefully, they can redo that section?
Well, that, their section's not in bad condition, because, and I'll say that because, uh, when the school was built, they actually
They did it then, because I know they annexed everything and have all the homes coming out there.
So their section in that vicinity is not in terrible condition, cause that'll get you from, um, where their city limits start down past New Hampstead, and some of the stuff they did out there for that.
Well, great job. I want, I wanted to thank y'all too, for working with Bloomingdale and doing that upcoming section.
Yes, sir.
And, um, hopefully with the next upcoming Splosh, we'll secure some funds along with Savannah, and hopefully get Savannah on board and Bloomingdale, and we can, we can proceed.
The thing I have to say, and, 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 uh, this is, uh, the projects that we just got through, the checks we're getting, and the money we're getting from the feds, is because we have preached from the federal level down to the local level, if we go in there as one Chatham, we get the money and we get things done, all right? When we start saying, okay, I'm gonna do it up to here and I ain't gonna do no more, and then, when we start that kind of stuff, then everything gets delayed and everything gets stretched out, and you don't get nothing done. That's a whole lot of talk, but no action. The action we have going on now is that the City of Savannah, Bloomingdale, La County, Port Wentworth, Pooler, we all are now talking off the same playbook, all right, running the same play. And we going, so that's what, that's what they're doing now, that's what they're telling you. We have agreed with them, um, to do all those things, and we're doing it together, all right? All right, now, I had a question, there was a question from one of the youth commissioners. Cut your mic on and speak into, pull it to you.
You answered my question.
Hmm?
You already answered my question.
I answered your question. Oh, okay, so I didn't have a swat then, eh? All right, thank you, ma'am. Anything else now about the road project?
Thank you, all.
All right, thank you all. All right, let's, um, the other thing to ask Mr. Manager is you call on, um.
Ms. Jackson to, uh, give you an update on our resiliency program.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanted to take a second, and I know we're gonna try and get this fast, um, to give you a brief update about one of the projects that we have been, uh, working on over the past six months or so, to expand the discussion, I guess, examples of one Chatham. This is a particular effort, uh, Chatham County received a grant from the Department of Natural Resources, and under this grant, we are working with City of Savannah. And under this grant, we are working with City of Savannah specifically around looking at our codes and ordinances with regards to climate change, resilience, um, and hazard mitigation and protection. So we are now entering the last phase of year one. It is a two-year grant, um, that we receive again, starting in October of twenty-twenty-four, and about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, which is great. And we are now entering into the public process, the initial public input and public comment period with regards to hearing from the general public, stakeholders such as yourself, elected officials and others, what type of information or roadblocks, or just thoughts in general about, uh, the ordinances and codes that we have in place within the county and City of Savannah that we may wanna look at, um, improving, protecting, or even developing. And with that entire process, to bring you up to speed, we have a number of upcoming public events and pop-up events. We have one set for February fourteenth at the farmer's market, and that's where we'll be out there really asking the general public, um, their thoughts on this process. We also have a survey that is now live, uh, that the general public can partake in, and you have all been invited to take that survey as well. It's not long, I promise. Um, and again, to gain input on what we need to really critically look at. And then to let you know, along that same process, you should all have our same project, you should all have handouts, and this will be, um, shared. We have this on our social media, we have this on the main page of the county website as well. There will also be a press release going out, and we will start to see more and more of this information going out to the public. But we have our first two community vision, visioning sessions. They're both virtual, one in the morning and one later in the evening, that the general public, um, and anyone really interested in this process can partake in. Uh, February twenty-sixth at nine o'clock in the morning, and then February twenty-sixth as well at five-thirty in the evening. So this will just be the first phase of this public process, as I mentioned. And it's very important that we hear not only from elected officials, general stakeholders, but the general public as well, is what type of issues are you finding? What are your major concerns, um, with regard, with regards to coastal hazards and vulnerabilities and, and change of the community? So, all of that being said, um, you'll continue to get more information on this, but we just welcome you to please take the survey and join us at any of these events, and, um, we've got about another year left, and you'll hear a lot more about it. The outcome of this entire thing, the intent of the project, is to really come forward with, honestly, a group of codes and ordinances that we would like to amend or bring new to the table for you to look at and make those changes to protect us for the, for the future.
Any questions? Commissioner White?
Thank you, just, I don't have a question. I just wanna commend Ms. Jackson. I had the opportunity, um, last week to take part in the Coastal Resiliency Leadership Academy that included elected officials from the entire region. Chairman from Bryan County, uh, Commissioners from Glen County, and so on and so forth. And I, I, she gave a presentation that really just, you know, knocked my socks off, so to speak.
It was a lot, I know.
But it puts things in, in perspective, and as we see these weather events such as snow, um, might see that a lot more frequently, um, flooding and things like that, I do wanna just urge my colleagues as a commission, um, to really pay attention, because we do need to, I believe we should consider, um, I don't have anything particular in mind, but I do think we need to consider how we can, from a policy standpoint, really support the efforts of our R- Resiliency Office, to make sure that One Chatham is safe and protected from climate change, because it is happening, whether we want it to or not. And climate change is not a partisan issue, this is a people issue, and so we should be very adamant about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Anything else, Ms. Ma'am?
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, with that, um, we must have a, um, uh, uh, executive session, all right, for land acquisition, appointments. All right, oh yeah, it's just land acquisition, because we don't have any, okay. All right, so may I have a motion to recess to executive session?
Second.
Proper motion is second, that we, um, go to executive session, ready for the question. Please cast your votes, cast your votes, cast your votes before you leave. There you go. We in recess.